All right, I think we're ready to call the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, February 1st to order. Welcome, everyone. We have five of seven commissioners. Commissioner Bodnar and Commissioner O'Reezy are out tonight. So, we -- this is the point in the agenda. If anyone has a burning issue to speak to on -- for an item that's not on the agenda, you can give me a speaker card and have three minutes. I don't have any speaker cards, so I'm assuming we have no public comment on items not on the agenda, so we're going to close that period. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Oh, yes, and would all three of you please turn off your cell phones? Yes, I was telling myself to remember that, but --
No worries.
Yes, or on vibrate. What do I do without you, Mike?
Sorry.
So, the two items on the consent calendar are the minutes of the January 18th meeting and also the 400 Main Street revision that came back to us. Are there any comments on these -- those items?
I have a question. On the minutes, they say that there's an attachment from -- I forgot who it was.
Anita's.
Anita's. And there's nothing attached? So, is that on purpose, or was that --
No, I think that was -- that was written into the document, posted on the website. But that, you know, that was revised printed minutes, but that was more than a --
Okay, because I was like, there's nothing attached.
That letter is part of --
That's fine.
Part of the minutes, okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Only whether --
Turn on your -- yeah.
Since it was the consensus of the commission that we'd like to have legal counsel, or at least the legal information regarding interpretation on the 400 Main issue, which has prompted Chris to be here tonight, whether we should have that somehow reflected in the minutes that it was -- we wanted that here.
I felt like the staff report for tonight was very clear in the summary and --
It does. Yeah, I just wondered if it should be in the minutes or not, that's all.
You could -- well, maybe the minutes will be reflected, depending on who and staff was attending.
And we can note for the record that the staff report, the commission referenced the staff report that included feedback from the City Attorney's Office on the discretion that you have in applying that definition.
Okay. And were you -- let me just clarify with Anita, because I'm not sure if she's talking about the minutes from the last meeting.
Talking about the prior minutes, yeah, because it was the prior minutes, it was a substantive discussion.
Yes, it was.
Where we asked specifically, could we please have either legal counsel present or the information that legal counsel had presented or was -- had discussed with planning staff?
So, in the actions, John could probably add something along the lines -- I mean, I felt it was -- you're right, it's not explicit, but it does talk about clarifications and --
Right.
So, you could just add a point on the action, which is on page three of the minutes, provide clarification, including, you know, legal advice, whatever, blah, blah, blah. So, I -- does that satisfy?
I think --
All right, any other comments on either of the consent items? All right, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve both consent item one and two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, just because I was not here.
Well, you're abstaining from the minutes. Are you abstaining from number two? You have the packet -- the report in front of you.
No, not.
Okay, so you're abstaining from number one minutes, but you're -- and what is your vote on the number two?
Do we need to have majority, four people for the minutes to be approved?
Yes.
So, I can say I support the -- I forgot how I worded it, because I wasn't here either.
But then we only have three for the minutes.
I know, that's why I'm asking this question.
Right.
If you've read the minutes and you feel that either you watched the video as well and you feel comfortable.
I didn't, I didn't watch the video, but I read the minutes and I've read the reports, so I --
Can we, can we just vote on the minutes part?
Let's do that separately.
Because I have a question on 400 Main.
So, I move that we approve consent item number one, the Planning Commission minutes, with the addition of the note that we were requesting the council, our city attorney's council, at that time.
Okay, so do I have a second on that revised?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or?
Are you still abstaining?
Well, only, only the minutes.
From one, yes. Only the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so he's abstaining, but you're comfortable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So, we have one abstention and four in paper in the minutes. So, now, on consent item number two.
Yeah, my, my question on that is, when we talked about this, we talked about revising the, the whereas, or providing a whereas paragraph that would make it clear where this might elsewhere apply in the interim, and I'm not sure I'm getting that out of how this is written. Either that or my memory's faulty, so somebody help me.
Well, so the location says, it is --
Where are you reading?
I'm reading the first yellow whereas, says, "It is not on the principal retail restaurant corridors that are found on Main and State Street."
But it does talk about First Street corridor, and yet the rest of the, much of the First Street corridor is not in the CRS zone. So, the question is, is this really supposed to apply just to the part of First Street that's in the CRS zone?
Well, the part of First Street that's not in the CRS zone doesn't have this problem.
Right. Right.
So, so as a point of order, if we're going to discuss this, we should pull it off consent.
Right.
So, I want to be sure, is this, does anyone else, I mean, I --
I would like that discussed, because I wasn't at the meeting that this was presented, and I had some questions that I don't know if you guys already talked about.
Then I'll move that we pull this.
Deal.
All right, so, do I have a second to -- well, we don't really need a second if someone, if one wants to discuss, we've pulled it. Okay, so we're going to close consent item. We've approved the minutes, and therefore, in terms of order, we're going to just continue with number two and have that discussion, since we've kind of started it anyway, and so.
Or you wouldn't want to do three, then?
Did staff, did staff have, you had a response to that discussion point?
I think in your, your agenda packet, we provided information from the City Attorney's Office regarding the discretion you have in making the interpretation. What I'm hearing now is that you want some further clarification, that this interpretation wouldn't apply all along the First Street corridor, but specifically in the CRS portion of the First Street corridor where this would be.
Well, I'd like some help from my colleagues on recalling when we had the conversation specifically about, was this going to apply only to this property, or were we going to make it clear in the motion that it could apply elsewhere, but we would limit to where it would apply elsewhere at this point? And I thought that what we, what we agreed was, we would make it clear that this could apply elsewhere in the zone on First Street.
Not on, the critical piece is not on Main and State.
And not on Main and State.
But what about Second Street or Third Street?
To me, that was pretty clear when you look at the first two yellow whereases. You take them together. It talks about the, the zones that were adopted in 2010, which is specific to those First Street CRS.
But it doesn't say CRS, it says First Street corridor, which kind of implies all of First Street, which is, got two zones in it.
But it says were adopted in 2010.
They both, those were adopted in 2010 also.
Were they?
Well, I think this clarification will help. The First Street corridor basically has two zone districts. It has, and those most immediate to the Main and State corridor is in CRS. On either end, it's the CDR3. In the CDR3, office and personal services are already permitted uses and would not require a use permit. So, the entire First Street corridor, this could happen, the only portion that is prohibited is this section that's CRS. So, for the rest of First Street, it's already a permitted use, regardless of whether this is adopted or not.
So, only the CRS zone has the restriction of retail, must replace retail?
Yes.
Right, or get a use permit through that process.
So, does that address your concern, Anita? Because First Street corridor, therefore, this particular use permit is only the CRS, because the other, it's moot.
Yeah, I, it's just not clear to me that our intent, which was basically to say, "We think this is okay, not just in this instant case, but for other parcels that are on First Street in the CRS zone," I'm not sure that, I'm not, first, that it's appropriate that that appear here, and if it is, I'm not sure that it's clear in here.
Well --
So, those are two different questions.
I don't think, so, again, each use permit is, and correct me if I'm wrong, and it's great to have Chris here.
Yep.
Is specific to that property.
That parcel.
So, that is true, and that's where the second yellow whereas comes in, talking about in that zone overall, where, to me, that is an open door, potentially, to say, "If, if you're in that zone and you're facing a similar circumstance, then you come forward." But each use permit is specific to the, the site that you're granting it to.
And I think the third whereas in that line covers that. It's specific to this use at this location.
Yeah. If, if, what I think I hear is, if after the words First Street corridor, in the second whereas, it said in CRS, or adopted in 2010, I think that would clarify it. Is that something that we do or not do in the language of a use permit?
If the commission feels it would help further clarify, we can certainly add that language.
Because that would make it clear that we're looking at CRS properties that were transformed in 2010, because the other CDR3, it's moot for, and so that would make it very specific and transparent, which is what Renit was asking for.
Yeah, and because CDR3 as a zone was actually created, as I recall, in 2010. So, I mean, there was a bunch of things that went on in 2010, in addition to just --
So, if we add, hm, "I move that we approve item two in our consent item that was pulled off, with the correction that the second whereas, after the words First Street corridor, has in addition the words in CRS zone, be approved."
I have to ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Well, I think we need a second, and then we can have further discussion.
I second. Okay, discussion.
So, my question is, Fort Sotrello, which is on the corner of First Street and Main Street, is that considered the First Street corridor, or is that considered, because of that building, a Main Street thing?
The code reads that it's, it's specific to the orientation of the space. So, if the space fronts, its primary frontage is on Main or State.
Well, then that --
And so, that, that corner space, it, it's, right now, it incorporates, incorporates that whole half of the building, does have a Main Street address, it's 400 Main.
Right.
So, that space, then, as long as it has a 400 Main address, it would be considered fronting on Main Street, which, if you look at the zone district, says that that is limited to, but you could always consider a use permit there. But that's the differentiation, when you look in the zoning code, it's not the building, it's the space that is limited when it fronts on Main or State, or in this case, First Street.
But Sotrello fronts mainly on Main Street.
But the frontage is on mostly on, I disagree.
I'm not, not Main Street, on First Street.
Mostly on First Street.
On First Street, I agree with you.
And that was, I thought the code was rather well-written, because it said, if it has frontage on, and as opposed to saying an address, and I thought that was a very good differentiation.
Right, because Farmica has a 400 Main Street address.
Right, we went through --
But the code said --
And that's what --
We, right.
But that's why the, the code says frontage, and I thought that was a very clear differentiation
as opposed to address.
I guess it would be taking a look at the space and measuring the frontage along Main and First Street, and seeing which has the greater frontage, and then that could be used to support.
We were pretty clear last time in the discussion that, that Sotrello space was not considered to be encompassed by what we were understanding, that we were granting and drafting, because of the, the Main Street frontage, whether it is minor or major, I don't know, but, so, we didn't, in our minds, feel that that space would be eligible. I mean, anyone can ask, but that we would be receptive.
Well, each one stands on its own.
Each one stands on its own, but.
Okay.
Anita, you have, Alex?
I guess my question is, I really couldn't understand how, what does it mean to displace retail? Right? Like, we're saying that this doesn't displace retail, but you can never have two tenants in the space, so you're always going to have one tenant move out before another tenant moves in, and I just, I don't get it.
Vacancy.
Yeah, it's, I would say, it's an excellent question. It's something that I looked at when I was looking at the staff report, just trying to make sense of, I think, the original intent behind the language. Without a definition for displacement within the code, I think it's open-ended, and it's subject to interpretation, which, you know, again, public agencies get deference in that regard by courts of law. So, I think if the, the Planning Commission tonight is going to make an interpretation that we think that means, if the space is vacant, it's not displacing anything coming in, that's a reasonable interpretation that would be upheld, upheld by court of law. With all of that said, I think if the Planning Commission wanted to get more finite and understand, and maybe even create a definition for displacement, that's something that I think could come back to you, back to the council, for potential just cleanup of the code.
Yeah, I mean, technically, there's, I can't think of an instance where you could displace retail.
It would have to be in existence.
Like, literally have to physically go in there and throw their stuff out on the street.
It's like they're on a 30-day lease, going month-to-month of some sort, and if another --
Even then, like, you have to move out before someone moves in.
And I think even if you did an interpretation, let's say we did a definition for displacement, that was, let's say, six-month time period, that we said, if, if a retail place was in there within six months, you could not approve a use permit in essence for another use that's not retail. I think you would still face the issue of property owners potentially, you know, having someone move out, wait the six months, and then attempt to try to get a use permit. So, it --
Right, but at least there's then some pain for --
Or clear definition, too, that I think.
Right now, like, you can negotiate a full lease with office and still have your retail tenant in there.
So, I mean, I agree there's a certain lack of clarity, but again, in regards to this specific space, we had the right next door, always vacant space, in the same building, where clearly the due diligence in that example applied to this. Again, there's a slight definition, I mean, a change, but, I mean, we're, when, essentially, that tenant, in my mind, had already demonstrated that retail in his space for three years wasn't feasible in the, you know, the mirror image space right next door. So, I do agree that, you know, there's not a lot of clarity about, is it 24-hour vacancy? Is it six-month, whatever? In this case of this use permit, we already demonstrated that there was a three-year vacancy rate right next door. So, I, you know, again, in this use, in my mind, it was okay, but.
If you go back to the general plan, I think the, the purpose behind the language is to protect the retail tax base of the city. And, so, I mean, I'm, I, I agree completely with what I think Alex is trying to say. What's the point of even having the language if you're just going to ignore it, ignore the possibility, or ignore being able to compel there to be retail in a space? You know, what's your zoning code doing? But I don't, I, I think what our council is suggesting may be something we want to take up, which is, if we go back to the general plan, the general plan says, you know, you're trying to protect tax base. By what mechanisms do we, do we as a city want, what procedure do we want to follow for essentially abandoning a land use designation that, that says you, you need to have retail there? Maybe we need to take that up, I mean, it's --
Which, but which council actually already found in the case, pointing to Chris?
Well, not, not legal counsel, but sitting, sorry. Yeah, I meant, I meant legal counsel when I said counsel.
Okay, I meant, it'd be counsel, already.
That our, that our legal counsel, yes, I mean, I, I understand what, what our legal counsel is telling us, which is, the city has the prerogative to do that, a defensible prerogative for doing this. But if you go back to the general plan and the intent of the general plan, is this really, you know, do we have a process in place that's consistent with the intent of the general plan? No, I don't think we really do, and maybe that's what we should be addressing in the longer term.
Well, I have, I'd like to go back to the specific property. What I have seen, not only in our town, but in Palo Alto, is where there has been an attempt to legislate usage. You have to have a grocery store, you have to have retail here, you have to have another grocery, and they all fail. And they cannot be, you can't make something economically viable by saying, "You have to have this here." In this particular case, we looked at the First Street CRS zone and said, "Once upon a time, not that far ago, this was not forbidden to have office on here, and that will thrive in this market." And the fact that it seemed like a brilliant idea in 2010, it's not working. So, I understand there's a bigger discussion point here, but I look at this and I say, "If the goal is to have a vibrant town, and if, as we have seen, the applicant now for two cases, has tried really hard to comply and been unable to in this economic climate," I think it behooves us to recognize that maybe there was a planning attempt that is not viable in the current economic climate. And therefore, anybody who's in that small section of First Street, where we, we used to say needed continuous retail, now what we'll have is a lot of bodies in there, generating people who will work in the town, and who will eat in the town, and who will shop in the town. So, for me, I thought that staff had done a very good job of making it understood that on this property, and with that addition of the First Street corridor in the CRS zone, that anybody coming in at this point in that area would be clear that they could apply for a use permit on the understanding that there is a transparency that we're creating here that says, "In this section, it's okay, it's not our protected retail state in Maine." And as for going back to the general plan, yeah, but that's really big, and I would like, I would like us to focus in on this, on this man's property, because he has a lease where these people are paying to keep the space vacant for the next seven years. I don't want to see that.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with you. I just, to me, it's like, we just have to all recognize that anyone who comes to us with, in the CRS zone on First Street, like, that wants to put office in, we got to let them put office in.
And that's exactly the discussion we had our last meeting, was that was the consensus of the commissioners then.
Right.
That that was a good thing to do pending city council looking a review of the zoning as part of the visioning process for the downtown.
Right, because if someone else came in and, like, you know, someone's moving out, and a week later they want to put in office, like, it's, it's not displacing, so...
And that's exactly what we were saying, we were saying in this limited area.
And that's why I pulled it, because I wanted that clearer than it seemed to me that it was.
All right, so now, let's go back just to process. We have a motion, a revised motion and a second, and we've been having discussion. Do we want further discussion? Actually, maybe Phoebe could restate the motion, if you remember.
Well, the motion was to approve item two in our consent item with the addition of the words in the second whereas block.
Well, it's actually the fourth one, it's the second yellow one, but --
The second yellow, pardon me, of the First Street corridor in the CRS zone were adopted in 2010. So, it's clear, that's the whole point that Alex, you're right, we were clear on that, that we wanted applicants to have the same level of transparency and clear direction that anybody along that very limited stretch, who, at the tenant leaving, wanted to put in office, could. And then hopefully, by the time the visioning process reaches some conclusion, this will be a piece that will be repaired, because the discussion we had earlier was, we're doing it piecemeal.
Right.
And each person is sort of pushing a rock uphill this way, there's a transparency. When an applicant comes in, staff can say, "This has been supported, this is the way we're looking at it now, apply for your use permit, staff will be able to support this."
Okay.
And hopefully, somewhere in the minutes and in the collective memory of the planning staff, when we make any adjustments to downtown zoning as a part of the visioning process, we take a look at whether the term displacement remains, and if so, maybe putting a definition or something in there.
Go out, because you can't do it.
Right, good point.
Well, all right. So, with that, I'm going to ask for a vote with the, the motion. So, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No, okay, five, nothing. Thank you very much. So, with that, we'll move on to the public hearing on the Steve Lasaltos accessory structure regulations. Do we have a staff report? Yes.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Zach Dahl, Planning Services Manager with the City of Los Altos. The item before you is a series of code amendments to modify and update our accessory structure regulations. This was, as you recall, this was last discussed at our November meeting, and there was, it was continued with a couple of items for direction. Specifically, let's see here, there were, you, you had a number of questions that you were looking for input from the city attorney on with regard to how these regulations interacted with our accessory dwelling unit regulations. So, we basically summarized that into four questions, provided answers to each of those questions. So, overall, the goal of this was to modify our accessory structure regulations in anticipation that in the future, they could be converted to accessory dwelling units, so we wanted to make sure that new ones would be placed in a reasonable place that would be acceptable if they, in the future, became an accessory dwelling unit. So, overall, we are recommending approval of the ordinance before you, and I am available if you have any specific questions or want me to elaborate on any of the proposed amendments.
Okay, any questions of clarification? Phoebe had her hand up first.
Well, this one I thought might be a typo, that's why I was grabbing it. On page three, which is the discussion about the daylight plane, it says, "The daylight plane starts at six feet and proceeds inward at a four and 10 slope." We have never done a slope that's four and 10, it's four and 12, or three and 12, because that's the architectural, hm.
It's, so, that's a longstanding daylight plane that's been, basically, the goal is, is that it's four over 10, so at 10 feet in, you're 10 feet high, and that's the slope between those two points, but obviously, you could always change it. But the reason that's wording there is that's because it's always existed in the code as a limitation for accessory structures, but if, if you feel a different pitch is more appropriate, we can easily --
It wasn't a different pitch, I would like it set in, in the correct proportion, because when we do roof slopes, we do them as a unit inches per foot. So, if this is four inches in 10 inches, it's probably three and something in 12. And so, if you could put it in that correct language, I have no quill with the pitch.
So, yeah, and I actually, in this language, I was trying to simplify, because it was, it was significantly more wordy to describe how it came inward. So, one of the goals was also to just kind of simplify it, make it easy, more user-friendly, but --
It's inches per foot, is that's what the designation meant. So, if it was three and 12, that would say, for every foot you go in, you go up this distance. 10 inches is an oddball one, that's why I'm suggesting you might want to --
You go with the, you would suggest the three and 12?
Well, I'm suggesting whatever four and 10 is in the equivalency, if that's the pitch that you, has been from time immemorial, make it whatever it is in 12, and we'd be in business. It's probably 3.75, something like that.
Yeah, because that would be, so if you're going in over a span of, of 10 feet, you're going up four feet.
Yes, or if you're going in one foot, you rise so many inches.
Four feet, it's 48 to 120.
So, if it's four and 10, it would be slightly more in 12, so might be four and a quarter and 12, whatever it is, I suggest that the language --
4.8 to 12.
Say five and 12.
Might be five and 12, and that, if you did that, that would be more consistent with how people build.
So, we could just change that to a five and 12, because that would also align with a more standard pitch roof?
Yes.
Margaret Keefe today?
That was the one that I was, made it easy.
Other clarifications for staff before we take public comment? No, no clarifications?
I have a couple. With respect to in the staff report, question number three, and the answer to question number three, there's a bunch of questions in number three, but there's kind of only one partial answer, and I wondered if we could get some more answers to those questions.
And City Attorney's Office is actually happy to take some blame for that. We focused on the legal answer, and I think there's probably a planning answer in there, too.
Yeah, that's what I think, too. And that's fine, I just want to get the planning part, please.
So, really, you're, you're asking about if it's non-conforming, what can you do with it? And, and so that, in that case, and I actually, I think --
And part of its answer down below the bottom of four. Part of it's answered down below the bottom of four.
So in a way, yeah, that rolls down, and really, then it, that structure is subject to our, our non-conforming section for non-conforming structures, and in that case, you could add on in a conforming way. However, you can't rebuild any portion that is non-conforming, i.e. sits in a setback, and if you have to rebuild structurally more than fifty percent of that structure, you have to bring it into conformance. And what we find is with most accessory structures that are non-conforming, they're generally older, and it's pretty tough to do much of anything to it without rebuilding most of the entire thing. So usually, if people touch them, they have to bring them into conformance anyway, or in some cases, they can literally just add on with minimal alteration to it in a conforming way. Though, that's the typical way during my time here that I've seen non-conforming accessory structures handled, is either they're scraped and rebuilt, it's, if it's an old, say, detached garage, and they want to upgrade it to habitable, you have to structurally rebuild almost the entire thing anyways, so it wouldn't, you would neither need a variance or you'd need to comply.
So on the back of pa, on page four of the staff report, where it speaks to, in the second sentence, "However, as specified in each of the city's single-family zoning districts, if a structure has an existing non-conforming setback, and fifty percent of more, or more of the floor area of that structure is voluntarily being eliminated or replaced, the entire structure, blah, blah." It doesn't say if any specific percentage for addition, so does the fifty percent, does that apply for an addition as well?
No, it's just the existing portion. Your addition could be as large as you want, as long as the addition's done in a conforming way.
Okay, then that answers that piece of that question. Go ahead, Alex.
So voluntarily eliminated, does that mean if, if it's beyond repair, you know, it's like, it's rotted or whatever it is, and you have to remove it, is that still count as voluntary, or you get, that goes into some involuntary bucket that doesn't count towards the fifty percent reduction?
If, I mean, it's kind of the, an alternative term for rebuild. If you want to come in and get a building permit, and the current building code says, although that two-by-four rafter cannot remain, you got to replace it with a two-by-eight or whatever, or you've got to rebuild the foundation, we would consider that a voluntarily, a voluntary replacement.
Got it. So if you're voluntarily take, removing forty percent of it, but there's twenty percent additionally that's non-salvageable, you're removing sixty percent, you're exceeding the threshold.
And, and that's usually the case, because accessory structures, one, are generally smaller, a couple hundred square feet.
Yeah.
And two, given the way they were built in decades past, they were not all that structurally sound, so it really, you touch any part of it, you functionally have to rebuild the entire thing.
I just want to make sure that the, that's not, you know, salvageable, is counting towards a fifty. Sounds like it is.
Yes.
Even if it's a surprise.
Right.
Right.
Got it.
Doesn't matter how surprised you are, it still counts.
Right.
And I have a question, I'm sorry, Alex, do you have more? In fourteen dot fifteen dot zero three zero on the rear yard coverage.
The page?
That's page two of the proposed new, yes, statute. When it says, "In addition to compliance with the maximum allowable coverage and floor area ratio as provided by the subject's zone difference, the maximum coverage, blah, 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 can be thirty-five percent." I believe, I want to understand or confirm that the, that introductory clause means that even whatever you're going to put in as a non-conforming structure in the rear setback, still would count against the total coverage. You can't exceed the total maximum allowable coverage for that, whatever that R-zone is. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That, that coverage maximum that's in the zoning code for the given zone district.
Is governing, period.
Mike, did you have any?
The only question for clarification I have is glancing at the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that you've provided us today, and the one that we saw in November, they appear to be exactly the same, is that correct? There were no changes?
Yes, there was, I think, a couple of slight grammatical changes, but substantively no changes.
Grammatical or spelling or whatever, no?
Yeah, I want to say there was, there was a couple minor tweaks, but yeah.
But none of the numbers or any of the, I didn't see.
Yeah, there's no functional differences in terms of regulation standards, setbacks and so forth.
And how do we define height for, for residential? Because when we get to talking about the permitted, allowable heights in here, are those always to the highest point, or do we get mixed up in midpoint issues like we do with commercial?
No.
The highest point. Yeah, for all single-family districts, height is absolute tallest point of a building.
Thank you.
Oh, that's way too clear.
I have a question about rear yard. Is it thirty-five percent of the rear yard setback from property line to property line? Or is it thirty-five percent of the rear yard setback within the side yard setbacks?
Good question.
This is what architects go nuts over when we go in later.
If you go into attachment, you go toward the end, there's a couple of color exhibits that were attached to the original staff report, I think it's like four or five pages from the back, it's, looks like this one, it's, so right there, you can see front yard and rear yard. So a rear yard is property line to property line, the rear, in this case, say twenty-five feet, which is a standard one for the R-110 district. So say the lot's a hundred feet wide, so the rear yard would be a hundred feet wide by twenty-five feet in depth.
So it's absolute?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the side yards fill in the area between the rear yard and the front yard. So hierarchy, it's front yard, exterior side yard, rear yard, and then what's left gets the side yard.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, is that all the clarifications? All right, so then I'm just going to open this up to a public comment. Again, I have no speaker cards, but would you?
Wait.
So you can do that afterwards, if you want to go ahead and just remind us of your name, I should know it by heart, but.
Hi, I'm Jeremy. So really, this is about ADUs, it's not about structures.
Microphone, yeah, for three minutes.
Limit the time.
Oh, they were not, they didn't start.
No. I'm just.
Thank you.
Procedurally, want to make sure we're doing everything correctly.
I'm probably not going to take the full three minutes.
No, that's all right, but just we need.
Yep.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll, I'll continue. This, this isn't going to be the last thing that you talk about, about ADUs, so I'm really, I'm mostly talking about what you do next, as far as ADUs go, because the goal of this is to prevent intrusive ADUs. And there's more than one way you can do that. The approach you're taking right now is to physically restrict what people are allowed to build, and that's what the state has essentially tried to their best ability to prevent you from doing. The other approach that you can take is to incentivize people to build non-intrusive ADUs. And I don't know what the details of that sort of program would be, but if there is one set of restrictions, which is what the state's letting you do, which is essentially what you're doing right now, to physically restrict the size and intrusiveness of ADUs as allowed by the state, you could then have a second set of restrictions even further inside, at, at which point, if someone builds an ADU, they would qualify for some program, possibly they would additionally have to agree to some affordability requirements, or something. I, there's a lot of possibilities for details of something like this, but that could further have the effect of creating ADUs in Los Altos that are not intrusive. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, and if you could fill out your speaker card and make sure staff gets that, and then that is all the speakers I see, so we'll close public comment and open it for commission discussion.
Which side do you want to start?
Talkative, aren't we?
Mike, we, you, it's been so long.
I know, that's why I like to hear what you had to say. Well, to be upfront, from reading the staff report and knowing that what the previous conversation was, I think it's been addressed, most of the items have been addressed, so I don't really have anything to say, other than it sounds like a good idea.
And you were there, I think, was everyone here there for the November discussion? We were all, okay, good, yeah. All right, further comments?
If we're going to go down the line, I agree that what Jeremy was asking about, I think, is differentiating between accessory unit and accessory dwelling unit. And we, as a commission, have dealt with the concept of being supportive of accessory dwelling units, to the extent that we were tweaking with parking requirements and minimum lot size, and so I believe that that, that piece of it is dealt with in a separate way. What this is doing is talking about physical size and location, and how, in order to protect both fire jumping between properties and noise, if possible, that this is how we're choosing to do it, and I'm really pleased to see the interlocking aspect of it. So I can support this as it is.
Okay.
Agreed.
I can't. For exactly the, I'm going to take Jeremy's comments about preventing intrusive ADUs, I think what's made clear from our legal counsel's comment, which I really appreciate having, it helped us a lot, that basically, what we, I think, the question that we had before was, since the state law says you have to allow conversion for existing non-conforming, was that going to apply going forward to new things that might be built, or did it only apply to non-conforming structures that existed at the time that that law was signed by the governor or became effective? And, and the answer clearly here is, it's going to apply going forward. That says to me that whatever we do here tonight means that any accessory structure that may be built going forward, we have to assume potentially can be converted ministerially to an ADU.
Yes.
That, for me, is a game changer, because to me, that means that we now have very clearly the opportunity to say, "This is where we really want the ADUs to be that people might build," because people are going to have the opportunity essentially to game the system. They, they might not be able to get an ADU approved coming forward in a, in a plan, but they can put an accessory structure in and come back after and have it converted. So to me, that, that completely is, is a difference from the, from where we thought we might end up. And for that reason, I do not believe that the setbacks that we have here are adequate to protect the neighbors. I think what we are inviting here is the opportunity for people to put in an accessory structure, not for the original purpose that we had accessory structures, which were things like barbecues and gazebo and, you know, poolhouse or whatever, but potentially putting in structures that are habitable, new living units that effectively turn an R1 into a multifamily parcel, and allows an owner to push that maximally towards his or her back fence and back corner into an area that the neighbors assumed when they bought their property was a part of kind of the open space and the open feeling that we had in Los Altos. I realize I am the minority vote here, that this will probably get me nothing, but I do want to go on the record of saying, I do not believe that the, that the setbacks that are proposed here are sufficient. I would change table one and require, because I believe it's table one that really deals with placement. I think the table is currently a little bit confusing as it is, because in the required rear yard setback area, it talks about, or, pardon me, in the required side yard setback, it talks about maximum height, if it's maximum height of six feet, that there's no minimum setback, but it does not discuss that if it is taller than six feet, there is a setback. So to me, that, the table is insufficient in that regard, or incomplete, I guess. But even so, I would like us frankly to say, you cannot put an accessory structure taller than six feet in any part of the setback. Period. Because I think that it violates the entire concept, precept of our zoning code, which was, you know, an accessory structure is an accessory structure, it's not a living unit. And I'll stop there.
Okay, I have a couple comments. One is, there, it's also reflected in the minutes from the last meeting, that there were a number of us at the meeting last time who felt that five feet setback was stricter than it needed to be, that two and a half, as it is, is sufficient, because with the addition of the daylight plane requirements, that would be okay. So I didn't hear any mention of that. I know it's the exact opposite direction that Anita was just saying, but I just want to remind everybody that this is what at least three of us had mentioned, and it's reflected in the minutes for last time. So I think actually, five foot is too much. And then the reason I'm saying that, and I do understand what Anita is saying, but, but really, with the state law the way it is, I can't really imagine, for one thing, and this is usually Phoebe's line, is we don't have people, you know, falling over backwards to build these units. We get very few, even in one of the articles that one of the members of the public sent, they talked about Palo Alto got four applications in 2017, and that with the big rush, they had eight or nine applications, and, well, maybe 2016 to 2017 was in eight or nine applications. Palo Alto is quite a bit bigger than we are. So this is really not going to be happening in that many places, it's not all of a sudden going to become a duplex town. I know that's not the proper definition, duplex. Two family, two family lot, parcels. Anyway, I also feel that if we do it as written, much less, you know, Anita's point, which again is valid, but most people, because they can just use the state regulations and build an accessory dwelling unit now, without some of the hurdles that were, you know, the fifteen thousand square foot lots and all the rest of that, why in the world would they go to the expense of building an accessory structure to then later spend more money on it, to turn it into an accessory dwelling unit, when they can do that in the first place now, with much less obstacles than they had? So I don't think it's realistic to feel that the accessory structure regulation is really going to lead to this subversive path to getting accessory dwelling units. I also think it's really preventative for the majority of homeowners who might actually want to really put an accessory structure in place, and to require that to be five feet or more than five feet from the setback, really means you're going to have your gardening shed in the middle of your backyard, a little bit of an exaggeration, but. So therefore, I really agree with what's in front of us, other than I feel that we felt that the daylight plane took in, to account that any damages, and I would really prefer to see that setback at two and a half feet, not the five.
Well, and I would like to point out that at the same time, I said this at the last time, two and a half feet is a useless space. Five feet is not great, but five feet is a building code definition for a one-hour construction. And so if you're two and a half feet, then there's a proximity that I think is not good to encourage. I think it's better to have the five feet and be able to walk behind it and paint it and do maintenance on it. Two and a half feet, you, it's really hard to deal with. So I understand your point, but in fact, I think five feet is more appropriate for the fire separation and for usability. You can put your trash.
Interesting, because the minutes actually show you as agreeing with what I had just voiced.
I know, well.
So the minutes weren't quite right. Okay, so then there weren't three of us, there were two of us.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one question? I'm just reading under table one, number one. So when accessory structure is located in the side yard setback area, "It shall be screened from off-site view with solid fencing, which is not lower in height than the accessory structure." And we're allowing accessory structures up to twelve feet? So.
That's, for, if you look at the top first row, the maximum height is six feet, and so that, then when accessory structure is located in the side yard setback area, the maximum height is six feet.
Got it, so that twelve feet, that doesn't apply, okay.
Which is a maximum.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, any other, so do I have a motion?
I'll move. I move that we approve. I move that we approve the accessory code structure, accessory structure code amendment 17CA04, as in our, subject to the conditions and.
Just one friendly suggestion to amend the code you're recommending to the council.
Oh, excuse me, I recommend approval to the council of this change to our zoning accessory structure code amendment 17CA04.
Do I have a second?
I'll second up.
Do we have discussion? Any further discussion, I should say? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, four to one, to recommend it to council.
Two people absent.
And, well, yes, and two absent still. So, all right, so let's move on then to commissioners' reports and comments.
Who was at the last city council meeting?
I actually was at the city council meeting for December 12th, and I haven't been at a meeting since then, so I do want to make a report, which there was no items on the city council that we needed to talk about.
Okay. All right, any other items? I do want to say that both of.
I do have something else, I have a.
Oh, then go ahead.
So the other question I had, had to do with the League of City Planning Commission meeting, or, it's in Northern California this year, and I haven't heard anything. Last year, we got shut out because we waited till the last minute to.
We were doing some research on that, and we're going to be sending out an email to you all shortly. I understand it's in San Diego this year, from what I had heard, which I, which is kind of.
It's opposite of what, yeah, because they went north, south, north, south.
Last year.
Yeah.
So if there's anyone interested, if you want to send me an email, we'll send you some information about that as well, but we'll pay for the registration fees, stay at the hotel, and.
I've attended three of the sessions, we've been quite well, and if you can take the time off, it's very valuable to listen to what other cities are doing and what some of the issues are that they face. The, two years ago, they were talking about Uber and Lyft and Airbnb, and how cities had to think about those things because they were impacting different towns, which got my, my thought process, for example, and we've had since then, issues about that stuff. At the time, we said, no, it's not a big deal, but it's turned out to be.
It's some very good training, especially for new commissioners, they've got sort of a, a series of sessions you can attend that provides some good basic land use information and how to review different land use permits and so forth. So if you're available to attend, I would encourage you to go to the conference.
I think if you just send us all the email and then.
Okay. We'll reply back.
And we'll reply back if we're interested.
Yes, not covering all.
I also neglected to say that following last, our last meeting, Ronita and I did meet, as we discussed. We did meet about all the parking stuff, and I had, took from that meeting an action item to be in touch with Mr. Biggs, and to sit down with Mr. Biggs about some ideas that, that Ronita and I had, and I haven't scheduled that with Mr. Biggs yet, but I will.
And I, what I was going to say is, both on the item, the last item and the item we pulled for brief discussion from the consent calendar, I really appreciate that you took, both of you took a great effort to make sure all of our questions were answered, and Chris, thank you for coming, and, you know, so that was really helpful for both of those reports.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so thank you so much. All right, if there's nothing else, then we're going to adjourn. 7:55.